Good evening, I'm David Assad, the chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. This is the Zoning Board of Appeals for the City of Fall River. It's 6:00 PM on Thursday, November 17th, 2022. We are meeting at one government center in the first-floor hearing room. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20, Subsection F, I hereby notify all persons in attendance that this meeting is being recorded with both video and audio devices. Fall River Government TV, Craig Salvador, is recording both the video and audio version. If anyone desires to make an audio, video, or combination recording thereof, please notify me now and I shall make a public announcement of your intention. Our recording secretary this evening is Nina Kruger, the lady to my immediate right. Present this evening are permanent members, John Frank, James Corkin, Dan Dupere, Vice-Chair Joe Pereira, and alternate member John Sylvia is the gentleman to the far right, and he's in attendance this evening. Also present is the Director of Engineering for the City of Fall River and Acting Director of Planning, Dan Agia. Is that your correct title, something like that?
Something in that time-related description.
Okay. Nina, have all petitions been considered to be considered, been properly advertised, and all interested parties notified in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Zoning Board of Appeals in Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, as amended?
Yes.
I declare the November 17th, 2022 regularly scheduled meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals of the City of Fall River open for such business as shall regularly come before it. I remind all persons presenting before the Board, including the petitioners or butters, anyone in support or anyone opposed to the petition, their presentation should be limited to three minutes. Questions and responses must be directed through the chairman. The Board's rules and regulations direct the Board to specifically look for information which supports the petitioner's claim. As such, the petitioner should identify and factually support the basis for the petition. I again advise the petitioners and all interested persons that this Board is the Zoning Board of Appeals. This Board's authority exists pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, and is limited in scope and deals with the use of land as regulated by Chapter 86 of the ordinances of the City of Fall River. Additional permits, licenses, reviews, and/or approvals may be required for the specific development and/or use which is the subject of the petition before the Zoning Board this evening. The clerks in the building, planning, engineering, water, and licensing departments are competent in the discharge of their duties as clerks. They are, however, not lawyers and are not competent to give legal advice. The action taken by this Board has a real and lasting effect upon the title to your real estate. I urge all petitioners to seek competent legal counsel before filing your petitions and after a decision of the Board has been made. For example, there is a city ordinance, 2015-11, Section 10-1, requiring site plan reviews. A copy of the ordinance is available at the city clerk's office or from the planning department. I remind everyone that the building inspector is the zoning enforcement authority, and you are here this evening because the building inspector has determined that your proposed action is contrary to the City of Fall River's zoning ordinances. The City Charter, Section 9-18, mandates that all multiple member bodies develop and adopt rules or policy for public comment. We have adopted such a policy, which in short provides for citizen input on zoning board-specific matters at the end of this meeting. I disclose that an official copy of the Fall River zoning ordinance is available at the city clerk's office. One cannot rely on the online zoning ordinance. Are there any questions before we begin? We'll start with agenda item number one, Vieira Auto Group, Inc., 1174 and 1204 Pleasant Street, map K13, lots 43, 45, and 70. The applicant seeks a variance to construct a triple-tenant retail establishment in a BL, local business zoning district, waiving front, side, and rear setbacks along with parking and loading requirements. Good evening, identify yourself for the record and tell us what you'd like to do, please.
Yes, good evening. For the record, Steve Giosa with Civil and Environmental Consultants, representing the petitioner this evening. The petitioner is also here. And this is a request for Vieira Auto for a piece of property located on the northeast side of Pleasant Street in a local business zoning district. The property itself has one existing building, so on the exhibit I put up there, which is the variance plan, the lightly shaded building, which is adjacent to Quikashan Street, is an existing two-story mixed-use building. The remainder of the site now is parking lot and gravel. There was a second building close to Harrison Street on the east side of the subject property, and that building was torn down about a year ago. It was in poor structural conditions, there were a leaking roof, and they made an evaluation that salvaging the existing building was really not a feasible option. So, this petition is for the construction of a new building. The darker shaded structure you see on the exhibit would be a 2,400 square foot mixed-use commercial facility. The size of the building really limits what we can put here, so they're relatively small commercial tenant or tenants that would be located in this building. And we listed potential for three tenants, it likely may end up being only two, but they would have to be small, low-intensity uses on the property. The proposed redevelopment would create 16 off-street parking spaces, so we think when you look at the zoning district, that's a pretty good amount of off-street parking compared to any of the other commercial uses in the immediate vicinity, and we think that's a net benefit and beneficial element of the project to the neighborhood. And we're also going to eliminate some impervious cover, so from a drainage and runoff standpoint, we'll actually be reducing some of the runoff directed either off-site or into on-site drainage systems, which would be subject to site plan review, as the chairman indicated is a requirement of projects of this type. From a zoning standpoint, we believe that we have a uniquely shaped parcel of land which creates some hardships for the applicant. You have a wedge-shaped parcel with streets on three sides that is fairly unique in terms of how it constrains the ability to get a beneficial, economic beneficial use of the property. So we think that that is a very unique condition that doesn't necessarily affect the majority of the lots within the zoning district. The relief requested is setbacks for the building. The existing or the prior building on the property was right up on the street line. The proposed building would be 1.3 feet from the street line on Harrison Street, would also be from a side yard setback, 4.2 feet, which would be the north boundary line, and then 2.4 feet from the interior line that separates this building from the other building that's depicted on the plan. And they would have shared parking, so the parking would be utilized by both parties. And prior to the initiation of the construction, there would be a legal agreement between the two parties memorializing the ability to share that parking space. So the setbacks are needed to have relief in this case. We are providing pretty good on-site parking for a site in this district, and there is a parking garage within a relatively close proximity, a municipal parking lot, within a reasonable proximity to this site that would also be available for patrons of this particular facility. So we don't believe this would be detrimental to the zoning district, we think it is actually similar in nature and character and scope and scale to other properties within the district. And we don't believe it would derogate from the intent of the zoning ordinance. The intent is to promote similar uses, setbacks. When you look at the other structures located within the district, they're all very close to the street lines, property lines, so we're not requesting relief that is inconsistent with the neighborhood. And so we believe that that provides a basis for the Board to consider this application this evening. Creating a beneficial use on this property will also help the local employment, provide some opportunities for local employment, and we think, again, that is a net benefit to the local business district that this site is located in. So with that, well, we are providing pedestrian access also to the adjacent public ways. You'll see there are sidewalks along the face of both buildings leading along the parking facility. That gets us a little separation in public safety between the vehicles in the parking lot and entrance points to the building, and also a direct connection for pedestrian foot traffic to the users of this facility directly from the public way. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So 1174 is remaining? That's a separate, that's a separate piece of property? Yes. Owned by someone other than, and I'm going to ask if Brian Vieira is here?
His wife's not present.
All right, so can you spell Vieira for me?
V-I-E-I-R-A.
Because on the applic-, oh, was this submitted? Could be my eyes are going.
The first page was.
Okay, so the first page was resubmitted, because I was losing my mind trying to find Vieira as it appeared originally, and I said, I know, okay, so it's changed and it's done properly, okay. So that's the, so it's just because of the proximity that 1174 is involved in this petition?
That's correct. They're going to share their parking facility.
It's going to be a shared parking facility.
Correct.
The building, the proposed building, the 2,400 square foot building, is there any way of getting, I know you've designed it, any way of getting more setback from that rear from K13, 42, and 107 Harrison Street?
We've probably.
I understand, I understand being 1.3, but that distance in the rear, if it can be brought forward?
Yeah, we're, right now, we're showing it 4.2 feet. Yeah, I think we do.
Listen, on a bad day, if I had lunch, I couldn't fit 4.2 feet between.
I can sympathize directly. No, I think we can shave a little bit more off, not off the building, but move the building a little bit closer to Pleasant Street, and by a little bit, I'm thinking we could probably get to a five to five-and-a-half-foot setback and not compromise the pedestrian movement on the front of the building. So that would be an acceptable recommendation that the applicant.
I'm just asking, just because I know that tightness.
It's, it's, it's close. It's similar to what was there before, but it is a close proximity to that line, yes.
Okay.
So we could live with a five-foot separation if the Board were inclined.
That's fine. Okay, anyone else, members of the Board? Go ahead.
Yeah, are you considering Harrison to be the front of the building? Because you're asking for.
It's a little difficult to see, but there's two lots here. This, this is the boundary line of the lot where the building would be, so Harrison technically is the front of where the new building would be, and we would look at this as a side yard and this as a rear yard. It's a little convoluted because we do have the joint use with the other property, which, you know, really, the primary front yard is Pleasant Street.
Are those lots going to be combined?
No. They'll remain in separate ownership with a agreement for joint parking.
Not, not, not talking about the existing building, but we have a separation, we have separate lots on the property to be developed. Are they all under the same Vieira Auto ownership? Is there a reason they won't be combined? Because if they're not going to be combined, then you have more setback issues.
They're not going to be.
No, they're going to be, they're going to be combined.
I'm going to give some explanation.
Go ahead.
So, we have two separate properties, one that contains 1174, and then one that contains the new lot.
Yep.
Vieira Auto Group is the owner of the vacant parcel where the proposed building is. You'll see there is a separate applicant and owner listed on this application, which is Mario and Maria de Luz Silva.
Yep.
So this variance will cover both properties, and we require that they file it that way, so that way this, this decision is memorialized with both properties and both deeds, because they are contingent upon each other. What the owner did about a year ago, previously, there were two separate parcels that Vieira owned, and that's the A&R plan that I've added into your package, which is the smaller plan.
Yep.
Two non-conforming parcels that had a four-foot gap in between them that was owned by 1174.
Gotcha.
So to minimize the amount of relief being requested, the, the two parties, the De Luzes and the Vieira Auto Group, entered into this A&R agreement to create a conveyance and a, to create a conforming parcel of land. So it was one less section of relief that they needed to request from you. So they are here today on a, excuse me, conforming parcel of land for the district with just the setbacks.
Just the setbacks, okay.
And when the two parties dealt with each other, as there was not a formal parking lot, and as you'll see on the A&R plan, Vieira Auto Group actually owned frontage along on their other parcel of Pleasant Street.
Right, yep.
In the overall scheme of things, in both parties working together, they were able to create a much better condition to come before you and minimize the amount of relief that was being requested. So everyone gets a new parking lot, including 1174.
Right.
With access, and again, a building very similar to what was previously there that was removed. The building, I guess, I asked the applicant, the building was removed prior to any application, so there was no hard location of it, but from aerial photographs, we, we can determine that the building was pretty much on the property line. So whatever setbacks we can get would be an improvement along the North Lee or the Harrison Street side.
Okay, great.
Dan, thank you, that helps.
And of course, this would go through site plan review, look at drainage, infiltration. This isn't a BL district where lot coverage is not an issue, 100% is allowed, so, although they would be reducing the amount of impervious cover, would be a benefit.
Anything else?
No, I have nothing else.
Dan?
The only access is Pleasant, right?
Yes. Well, that's what's being proposed, access off Pleasant Street, nothing coming in off Harrison Street. That's going to be right there, that's going to be the frontages.
That curb opening is there now.
It's current, existing curb opening. Jim? No? John? Any? There are, there is some vegetation in the back, but no room for trees over there.
Well, he said they were going to put something in it.
Well, there may be some.
It's kind of like a concrete jungle there.
No, no, but that's what's there now, but as I, knowing the lot, there's, there's some wild vegetation there, but if there's going to be some abrevities or something, but it's, it really isn't conducive to say, let's put a tree or something. But I was just concerned about the lots to the north, if it was right on that line. All right.
I just have one question, I'm sorry.
Ask.
What's going to go into the building? Do you know the businesses that would be?
We don't have tenants at this time. I talked to the owners as recently as about 15 minutes ago, and they're, they're still talking to different people, but they do not have any specific tenants that have signed on yet, so.
John, the uses would have to comply with the BL district. You're not granting any relief with regards to use.
Not to use, yeah.
No, I was thinking more of the parking situation, if it's going to be something where people are going to be there hours on end, that's opposed to in and out, because Harrison Street is very packed. You know, the people that live there are on the street no matter what, and when it snows, so.
When the applicant came, they came in maybe three months ago to start this process, and when we discussed access to Harrison Street, I had told them that, you know, because of the parking situation on all of those side streets are difficult, that access, we would not look kindly upon a proposed access to Harrison Street, taking away some off-street parking that was there.
Okay, anything else? Is anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Hearing none. Members of the Board, can I get a motion to grant if you think they've met the burden of 48, Section 10, shape, topography, soil condition hardship? If you think so, then maybe we should get a motion to grant. If you don't think they have, then we get a motion to deny.
Motion to grant.
Motion to grant with any mod, any conditions?
Subject to.
That you want to change a condition of a five-foot rear yard or that side yard to the north, where it's 4, 2.4 and 4.2?
You, you want that, so we will go with a minimum of a five-foot setback.
Okay.
On the rear of the.
The north side. Pardon? The north side of the property.
That's right.
Okay, other than that, anything else? That's it? That's your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Jim Corkins made a motion to grant with that condition. Do we hear a second?
Second.
Second, okay. Joe Pereira, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you, good luck to you, man.
Enjoy your Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
You too.
Agenda item number two, Beverly Pereira, Care of Attorney Mark L. Levin, 350 Rochester Street, map lot 4, lot 90. The applicant seeks a variance to construct in addition to an existing non-conforming garage, waiving area lot coverage, side and rear setbacks, and dimensional requirements in an S single-family zoning district. Good evening, Attorney Levin, tell us who you are or what you want to do.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, I'm Attorney Mark L. Levin, 4 of Massachusetts, representing Beverly Pereira, who is in attendance tonight. Property is in an S zone, this is a, an area that had been built up many years ago before zoning. In fact, my client's property was built in 1926, along with the garage as it exists today. As you see, most of the properties are pretty much the same size, other than one that's nearby. They all have garages on their property for their own use. And my client, over the years, has found that all that purpose of her garage presently is the ability to put storage in, because it just really doesn't fit a single-car garage at this point. Her intent is obviously just to expand at the same level the garage, so that the front of the garage would be deeper to put a car in, in the addition to the side of the property, north of the property from where the garages would be for her storage. The neighborhood is such that everyone has a garage, they're all similar sizes, and no matter what we could do, that we would, tearing down that building to put it in a different location, because it's already there, wouldn't be any better, because we'd have to seek you anyway for lot coverage and area, because it's just a small lot. So we wouldn't be able to tear it down and move it and put it another place without coming back here anyway. So leaving the garage is what they desire, it fits right where their driveway goes right into the garage. Expanding it in the front gives them the ability to actually put a car in, because the car is, the garage is, who knows, what size car back in the 20s that they were driving, but it's bigger than what they have now, and they do want some storage. Now, in addition to that, with the members, my client did meet all of his or butters, all of their butters that are next door to them and behind them, and have, they had no objection to it, because they all have garages and they realize just leaving the cars in the garage isn't no different than putting it in the garage, and it'll just be, got much more usable for them. So although, yes, we could tear down the garage and place it a little bit different, because we have a house with the back extension, we're limited anyway. So no matter what we do, unless we cut the house down, or, you know, knock the garage.
No, but if you consider this relatively a small-scale addition, it's strictly going to be the garage.
It's all this, that's it.
So if you, if we make the argument that it's a blockland kind of case, where it's just a small-scale addition, question becomes, do you even need to be here? But the fact that the building inspector said you did, then you're going through the proper procedure of getting the permission from the Board to do it.
Yes.
Okay, and it's going to stay a single, a, it could be one or two-stall garage, but it's going to be, it's not residential, it's not.
They're not planning, yeah, they're planning to use it as a one-stall and then having an additional area for garage storage.
Same height, same height, same roof line, same.
Yeah, just come across, you know, I mean, again, the existing garage is 1926, so it all needs to be remodeled, so it'll all be uniform when you finally see it.
No, but they'll have to pull a building permit, have to be inspected, but that's.
Absolutely.
It's not going two stories off, it's right, same line, same everything, okay. Members of the Board, questions? John? Dan? Joe?
No, sir.
Yeah, Jim? No, okay. Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Is there anyone here opposed to this petition? Hearing none, can I get a motion to grant? Motion to deny? Have they met the burden of the variance and?
Make a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Dan Dupere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is how they all will see in December.
Agenda item number three, Albi Gugiora, 193, 195, 199, Snell Street, map F20, lot 2. The applicant proposes to convert the existing commercial building at 199 Snell Street into two residential units. The applicant seeks a variance to waive area and dimensional requirements in an A2 apartment zoning district. The applicant also seeks a special permit to reduce parking requirements. Good evening.
Good evening, for the record.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Jeff Tolman from Northeast Engineers and Consultants, here representing Alba, Albi Gugiora, the petitioner on this application. Quite simply, what we're looking to do here is we have, this property is a pre-existing non-conforming property due to frontage and area, if you look at the overall unit count on the property. There's an existing six-family dwelling located at the front of the property, an existing single-family dwelling located in the middle of the property, and at the rear of the property, there's an existing commercial building that was formerly used as a photography studio. The applicant is simply looking to convert that commercial building into two residential apartments, which would be a less non-conforming use than what's there now. This property is located in the apartment zoning district, so we would be taking a non-conforming use and converting that into a conforming use. The structure itself is non-conforming due to setback, as are the other two structures on the property, and currently, there is not enough parking on-site to handle the, the amount of units that are on the property. So what we'd be looking to do is, again, make that conversion and also add some additional off-street parking. It's my understanding at the moment, with the current tenants that are on the site, I think there's only one that's allowed to park on the property, and this goes back to an arrangement that the previous owner had with the tenants. I think there's one tenant on, in the front building at 193 Snell Street that's allowed to park on-site, and I think that might have had something to do with the commercial use at the back. That commercial use has been abandoned for, since the, since the applicant purchased the property in January of 2022, has not been used commercially, so he's simply looking to convert it into a residential unit.
So we're getting rid of a pre-existing, non-conforming use, even though I think I saw something, it may have been granted by a variance, studio, storage, any of that. It, that's not consistent with the A2 district, we want to bring two residential units on the premises.
Correct. Two additional. Bringing the total up to nine on-site.
Nine, yeah. And that's it? The existing structure stays? You've got what you have, and we need maybe some relief on a special permit from the parking.
Correct.
Under 86, 445, is that correct?
That is correct.
Is that what you're looking for? Okay.
Is there any residential in that back unit now?
No.
No.
Strictly commercial.
Strictly that back unit.
And we'd be looking to, with the parking that shown on the plan, we'd be looking to provide nine off-street parking spaces, so which would be one per unit that would be on the site?
All right, I always have, I'm always.
I only see eight.
I can't find, I only.
All right, so I made a mistake, the one is directly east of the single-family dwelling, it's not labeled, but there's a, a parallel parking spot in that location.
Is that the, when you go by the hashtag and then you get the stairs, that blank space that doesn't have a number in it?
That is correct.
All right, because you're saying nine and I'm getting eight and I'm looking.
Yes, if you count the numbers, you get eight, but that, that is not labeled, that is a single.
So there is nine.
That's correct.
So next to 195, existing single-family dwelling, in that rectangle that's just gray, there should be a one there.
That is correct. Yes.
No exterior construction on the back building?
There may be a staircase that gets added within the building footprint, so it wouldn't be, I'm showing, if you, if you, you can see the.
Proposed stairs.
Proposed stairs located there, it'd be in that general area. Again, it wouldn't be any closer to the, to the property lines than the existing structure is.
But those, those are just stairs for ingress and egress?
Correct, to the second-floor apartment in the back building, correct.
How many bedrooms are going to be in that house that, that they're going to put the two units in?
That, I'm not sure. I do not, I, I know he has plans drawn up of it, I want to say they're three-bedroom units, but I could, they're either two or three.
It's a big building, so.
It is a good-sized building.
But it's only two units going in there, right?
Yeah, one per level.
Okay.
As you can see, you look at the footprint, it's bigger than the single-family that's out there, it's almost as big as the. out there, it's almost as big as the six-family.
Is there any way, I see the parking spots that have people parked behind there, because that area is extremely tight, even without snow. So is there a way of, like, you know, toward the back, putting the, you know, have cars go back there if it snows, because I don't even know where those people would park now?
We're pretty much maxing out what can be done with the parking, the only additional spot that we would have any additional room for would be on the west side of where the four parking spots are, between the six-family and the four, I'm sorry, the six and the one. The problem with that is, by the time you get access back there, you're kind of blocking parking, and you really don't gain anything by pushing that back further.
It's tight that where the four units are, where the four parking spaces are, driving by there, I couldn't figure out how you could...
There's nothing to gain.
Yeah.
Just, I think with the two-family, you're adding, if it's a three-bedroom, you're going to probably add four to five people, ten people in that building, and I really, you know, in the front, you've got a six-family, to me, that's a lot of people, is there any way that they shrink that down, you know what I mean?
Well, again, I mean, the four parking spots we're providing in the back would be for those two units, which would be in compliance with the zoning ordinance. The four additional spots that we're providing towards the front would be to help alleviate some of the issue with the six-family that's out there, but that's an existing condition that we're not proposing to change. We are adding, again, the one spot for the single-family, so they would have a spot, and then we'd have four, four additional spots for the, you know, for what's out front. So they, how that gets used and, you know, whatever it is, it's going to be a benefit over the existing condition that's there now, it'll certainly be an improvement.
So, so currently, the only parking is basically parallel parking along the length of that driveway?
Yeah, and I want to say, I've been out there on two or three different occasions, and again, there's only one tenant in the front building that's allowed to even park off-street.
I was there, I was there the other day, there were two full-size pickup trucks, and God forbid, if one of them needed to get out.
Yeah, it's, it really doesn't work, it's very tight, and that's why providing those four perpendicular parking spots would help.
With the concrete, whatever, looks like there used to be a water tank there.
When you look at the parking demand for that, you know, the additional two units at the back compared to the commercial use that was there before, it's, certainly, to me, it's going to be less, less of an impact on the neighborhood, having the two residential units over a commercial use.
For that back building, though, you're going to be adding ten to fifteen people, and the people that are on the side there, I'm sure, I don't know if anybody complained, but you're adding ten to fifteen more people on the back of this, you're adding more people into that, that's, you know, besides the parking, you're adding more people into a congested area already. Especially if it's a three-bedroom, if it was lower, you're lowering the density of people, but it's a tight, tight neighborhood right now. You've got the store across the street, Reese's, you've got the school across the street from there, so it's a tight, tight area to add fifteen more people in the area, that's...
I don't think it would be fifteen, again, if you're looking at a three-bedroom, typically you're looking, you're talking about four people, on average.
If you get a three-bedroom, at least five people, normally.
Dan, do you have any input on this?
No, I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation, I mean, getting rid of the commercial use is always a good thing.
No, step one, the commercial use goes, we have a use that's more consistent, you've got a large structure there, big building.
Absolutely, and I can understand, I think at the end of the day, zoning-wise, you've got a net improvement of off-street parking that doesn't exist there now. Now, I don't know if there is, you know, a condition or a provision that you could put in, that, what happens, you don't want to grant this and then find out that the six-family is still not allowed to park in any of these parking spaces. So you, you could create something in your decision...
No, well, of course, it's going to, will be the minimum of nine off-street parking spaces.
However, so right now, we have an issue with the six-family, as Jeff says, nobody, one, one car's allowed to park, so they build this two-unit in the back, they leave the single-family alone, theoretically, just those two structures could eat up the nine spaces that are in John's argument. So you could require that you sprinkle the wealth of parking spaces amongst each unit. Policing that is something, you know, difficult, but that's the general intention of what...
Is that even within our purview?
You can always put it in your condition.
We can put it as a condition, but I think it's a little bit, I think it's substantially greater than our authority to start getting into how number one you get.
That's a bad path to walk, I think. I, I hear you. I mean, and I, you know, it makes sense, we've come in, we're converting that building to...
Residential.
To residential, excellent, we're, you know, it's two units, four parking spaces, bang.
It's required.
That's it. If, you know, so, looking at it, looking at it like this, it's awesome. And, you know, whatever's going to go on up front, you know...
We're an old city, this thing would not have gotten developed in the twenty-first century, so we have to deal with what we're confronted with, and we've got this big building that exists, what do you do with it? We don't want it vacant, we don't want a commercial use, the residential use is in compliance or in conformity with what we can do, we wish we had more land, but we don't, so we're confined with what's there.
I...
The only question I would add, and have, you know, after you asked that, because things aren't dimensioned, so going through site plan review, which this will have to do for the increase of impervious surface, the parking require, the parking spaces would have to be dimensionally correct by your bylaw, not asking for a waiver of the size of spaces. So I'm assuming they're all nine by eighteen.
That's correct.
I understand the aisle width might get a little narrow, but that's also a zoning...
No, but that's, but that has to comply with what the ordinance is.
Yeah, but I don't think, I don't think it can for the aisle width, I don't think we can be...
No, not the aisle width, but the size of the spaces.
But the aisle width is technically supposed to too, so understand that, what you're waiving here is what's shown on this plan. If it's only a twelve-foot drive aisle, as you said, when you look at it, that's what you're approving. So you're waiving the ability to have a twenty-foot width, which I think is what's required. And then lastly, it's not in the application, so when you grant this, you may also want to include, and it could have been done through a special permit, the, you know, the expansion of the existing non-compliance as far as lot coverage goes. I'm just trying to circumvent issues from coming up when they come through site plan review, this would come through, if relief wasn't granted for lot coverage, technically, we'd have to send them back to you for lot coverage. So there is, it's already non-conforming, so by special permit, you can allow the extension of that non-conformity. And the reasons for doing so is to allow an increase in off-street parking, so there's more than a good reason for, I just would ask that you include lot coverage in the list of relief that you give, either by...
If we grant, we should, we should include all of that, because they shouldn't be coming back for something like technical issue about lot coverage.
So we, so we do end up, from a practical standpoint, because we don't have the lane, you know, for example, I was out there the other day, two full-size pickup trucks, if one of those was pulled into one of these parking spaces, he ain't backing out, if there's cars next to him, from a practical standpoint. Therefore, it's a land use issue, and you can't make the lot wider, so from a planning standpoint, can we just discuss the practicality of how much can we shrink that lane?
What, what I would do is just require that, and this happens often, there can be, you know, an easement or a dotted line to ensure that no one parks in the driveway. That's what happens sometimes when, when we approve these things, and it doesn't limit the access, you find that you've now got people double, triple stacked within their parking spaces, eating up the access aisle, and now you've got to call the neighbor in the single-family home to move his car so you can back out. So you just want to make sure that the lane is left empty, both for fire and emergency services as well, so. Parking is to be prohibited, I would say, within the actual driveway itself for access
Yeah, I have no issue with that, and the parking spots that are shown on the plan are nine by eighteen.
How wide is the lane?
That's a good question. I'd say it's eighteen for twenty feet in that, in that area, and again, we're not looking to widen that, we really don't have the ability to, we're looking to keep what's there now, and the, and the walkway that's there, and then provide the parking.
Is the walkway raised?
No, no, it's flush.
So technically, they could drive on the walkway, the spaces, the spaces are off, you know, adjacent to them, so you will cross that. The only pinch point is that unnumbered space next to the single-family, other than that, I think you'd have plenty of width.
So you'll be able to get a fire truck down there?
Yeah, a fire truck would fit down, correct, I mean, they would have to back out, obviously, but yes.
If we do nothing, the question is, can a fire, can, can emergency, it is what it is.
At least you're organizing some of the chaos.
You're well over the twenty feet, if you factor in the width of the, the actual driveway and the sidewalk, that's at the same level on the side of it, so there's adequate access to get back there in emergency purposes.
I mean, walking back there, it seemed wide enough, and I know where you're putting the parking spaces, so maybe it's not going to be that bad. Certainly better than parallel parking along that driveway.
So if we're thinking of granting, then the condition being that the driveway be unencumbered, must be maintained, no, the question becomes, who's going to enforce it, someone could be calling Glenn on Saturday morning or Sunday morning, but what?
People have family over, they stack the driveway...
Isn't that true with every single...
No, no, it is, but it is.
I mean, you can, you can require that it get hatched, labeled no parking, you can put up a sign.
We can do that, site plan review, I think, could also do that, which I think would be the more appropriate...
So when I look at this, for site plan review, because of the narrowness of the driveway, the, the four perpendicular spaces, if they were angled spaces, it would actually even make it easier making...
So, that's what I'm saying, is I think more of those, more of the technical issues that we're talking about, site plan review, and I, you know, I just think it's beyond the scope of this board to start saying, I want it hashed, I want this, I want that, but, and I think site plan review can do that.
It can, just as it has less teeth, but yeah, sure.
Okay, so that's what we've got, any, any other input from members of the board? Is there anyone here in favor of this petition? Anyone here opposed to this petition? Hearing no one, motion to grant, motion to deny, incorporate some of what we've heard from Dan, or reject everything and deny it?
I move approval with a waiver, additional waiver of...
Lot coverage?
Lot coverage, and no further subdivision.
No further subdivision? Okay. Special permit for the reduction in parking spaces or the required parking?
Well, I thought that was part of the approval.
Eighty-six foot, yeah, all right, but, well, we've got two pieces, he's got a variance piece, and he's got a special permit, but, so let's, so the variance part, we can change the use from the commercial use to the residential use.
Yes.
And in that variance...
And the granting of the building of two units.
Well, in, two units, two residential units in that building. And then the special permit part, that we find it less detrimental to the neighborhood, that it needs to get done for the waiver of the percentage of coverage and the parking under eighty-six, four forty-five.
Oh, those are acceptable, yes.
Okay, so that's Jim Corkins' motion, we have a second.
Second, no, no more than nine units, no less than ten parking places.
Nine.
No less than nine.
I'm sorry, nine, nine and nine.
One to one, no more than nine, no more, no less than nine, okay. You've modified, you've modified your...
Acceptance of the occasion, yes.
Just get the language.
Yeah, no, no, but I'm just wanting, his motion now incorporates that, nine and nine, not more than nine and not less than nine parking spaces. And that's the motion. Do we have, we have the second from...
Second, yes.
Yeah, we heard it, from John Frank. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Dan DuPere?
Yes.
Joe Pereira?
Yes.
Yeah, John Frank?
Yes.
Jim Corkins?
Yes.
Chairman aside, yes. Okay, so that petition's granted with those conditions. Thank you, Jeff. Dimension to be good on the next plan?
It can improve at some point.
We strive, we strive to do that.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, too.
That was done, he did it first with the variance, that was done, and then we had the special permit, two.
Might we take a note?
We combined them in one vote, yes, it was less, yeah, it worked, okay. Next agenda item, review and discuss updated fee schedule and two thousand twenty-three ZBA meeting schedule. So let's talk about, Dan, why don't you talk, tell us about the fee schedule that's being proposed?
Well, it is being proposed, so it's not a discussion of an updated fee schedule, it's a discussion of a proposed, so by no means is this being, being thrown at you that this is the updated fee schedule and we want to talk about it. So when we looked at, and we've been doing this for a while, when we looked at adjacent communities and the way that towns and municipalities handle zoning board of appeals issues, and this is also in planning board that we're dealing with this, what we found is that our fee schedule is very similar, however, multiple municipalities charge specifically for specific sections of relief. So if you needed three variances, you pay three fees, so if you needed setback, area, and frontage, you would technically pay three fees. We don't want to get into a situation where we've got this convo, because when you look at some of the schedules and the calculations of these things, it's almost, it's crazy, the time and effort on the applicant's part, and hours to check it, and to make sure that it's correct, and then you get here and somebody's missed one, I don't necessarily think that's, that's the right way to go about it, so something reasonable and simple is the way that, that we've proposed it here. But again, this is up, this is just up for discussion. In that packet that you have, you'll see that about a year ago, there was an updated fee schedule, second page, what was updated on that fee schedule was just that, the addition of the legal advertisement cost that was being borne now by the applicant. Third page in your application, you'll see the fees as they were increased in two thousand and fourteen, and that's basically where we're at today with the fees, so they haven't been touched since two thousand and fourteen. So of course, some increase would be, would be great to have, and this was just a, you know, throw a first dart at it so that you all can take a look at it, you can go online yourselves, look at what other municipalities do, and then we can have maybe a more fruitful discussion once everybody's digested what's, what's proposed, what happens in other areas, and what we want to do moving forward. Something also to think about, like the town of Seekonk, for instance, they not only charge an additional fee for each section of relief, they require an additional full submission, application. So you sometimes have seven applications for one project.
We can't get the building inspector, no, 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 listen to what I'm saying, we can't get the building inspector, when they do the denial, to be specific, and this is no criticism of them, about whether it's a variant special permit, whether it's side yard, front yard, so, I got it, I mean, I got it, if we had that kind of sophistication on terms of the review prior to coming here, that may be good, but I just couldn't think of overburdening the guy, the, the building inspectors and say, give me the component pieces of what relief you need. It's bad enough when I couldn't figure out Viera, and then I look and there's a new supplemental page, and then I, I wanted to say the one that Tolman had, was it Tolman? Somebody, it originally said that residential use wasn't permitted, that I'm looking at, I'm looking for, I'm saying, what the hell was I reading?
Oh, I don't know.
No, no, it was, I don't know, anyway, but it was nice to see that it was not there in the, in this current application.
And like Mark's, for instance, the whole thing could have been done by a special permit.
Right. It could have been done by a special permit, and I think under Brooklyn, he didn't even need to come here, but, but what do I know?
Yeah, I mean, going, going so far, separate applications for each, I, I go in front of some of the worst communities, and not even the mighty People's Republic of Cambridge
Now, remember, this is, wait, wait, this is still being recorded, so we're on the record. So if you're going to Cambridge next week...
Not me.
They're not watching.
No, so again, take this, take a look at it, you know, we'll, we can reconvene on it.
Dan, budget-wise, I know you haven't been sitting there that long, but budget-wise, is the zoning board a revenue source for the city, or a break-even kind of activity?
Well, it's, the department itself keeps, keeps none of the fees, everything goes into the general...
No, no, I got it, but I mean, looking at, for example, the publication now, shifting it to the applicant, got rid of a line item where before we'd pay the fee and we'd end up paying, the city would end up paying for it, now, now that's not happening.
That's correct.
So now we have these fees coming in, and I'm asking just in terms of whether or not we're looking at the zoning board, or all the boards, as being a profit center, or whether or not it's just...
No, it's not a profit, it's not a money-making endeavor.
That's, that's my question.
But, but you are able to charge fees in commensurate level with the services that are being provided, so the time, effort...
But that, that's my question, if I break down the hours that Nina spends doing it, looking at it, your review prior to getting there, when you look at the fee, does it...
We're not getting, yeah, it doesn't match our hourly...
That's my, that's my question, if anybody's done the cost analysis to review a pack... If anybody's done the cost analysis to review a package, how many hours did it take and what did it cost? And I'm getting a thousand bucks, but I spent 10 hours of review before taking it in, reviewing it, getting this done.
Could I ask what timeframe you're looking at for its mission?
There is none. I mean, it would be great to be concurrent with the calendar year, but it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I just think with the big one we have next month, that I would not want to see this next month.
We don't have to.
Just my thinking.
No, but it had to be on the agenda. We had to, we had to discuss it. And before we get to the, we have time to do our research and come back. Whether it's done at the end of 2022 or the no board in 2023, we can let those members deal with it.
It'll make me cry.
What are next steps on this, Dan?
Just really conversational.
Okay.
Whatever numbers you feel are accurate, review it. Again, I caution, when you look at other municipalities, understand, some of them are very clear that it's, it says for each. Like some of the super low ones, you'll see $200 and it'll say each, each variance. Some of them don't say that.
Each component piece, side yard.
It's very, you know, sometimes it's, I've, I've filed for variances in multiple municipalities where I've done a call and says, hey, we need three separate applications. You're asking for three sections of relief and you have to enumerate the specific section and, you know, and it's a denial letter for each one. So like, as the chairman stated, that, that creates a lot of work. So although it looks like a lot, we're allowing a lot in a very simplistic form and fashion, more so than most municipalities.
Well, and, you know, most municipalities, if you're in for a special permit and variance, there are at least those two applications speaking to the requirements and, you know, how the bylaw applies to what you're asking for. That's common, but you still have to enumerate. And if you miss a side yard.
Sure.
See ya, come back next month, reapply, do whatever.
So what we've tried to do is make sure that the, the building permit denial, the application, and the relief granted are the same. I tell applicants all the time, you can only request relief for what the building inspector says you need it for. The board can only act on what the board said you, you technically need it for. So we're trying to push people to get to, you know, a more complete package and accurate across the board. Now, if, if someone is asking for a variance and then also a separate special permit, we are currently charging them for each on the same application, but we do charge them the two forms.
One form, the two forms of relief.
And that's fine. Check two boxes. It's the same material, but technically it's, it's two different.
I agree with that.
So chew on it. You could tell me no, we're staying right where we are, and I would have no issue with it.
How wide, how wide a net did you throw as far as looking at, at other communities? Did you stay within Bristol County?
No, Boston South, Worcester, the West, where, down the Cape, some of the stuff gets a little bit really crazy.
You get Cape Cod Commission that does a lot, so.
Believe it or not, I couldn't get on the City of Totten website. I kept getting an error message. I don't know if it's an internal internet thing here or.
I think they closed.
No, they're not, don't say that.
They get the new city hall, they closed.
It's going into the casino.
Okay. That's the fee. Let's get on to the 2023 ZBA meeting schedule.
Citizens input. Citizens input. We have two citizens, I don't know if they want to input anything.